I'd like to call the study session for September 12th to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that council members Curry and Nichols are absent.
And Mr. Rosansky can come inside. Okay. At any rate, our current business, clarification of consent calendar items. Councilmember Daigle?
I did receive an email, as I'm sure the others did, on item number four on the consent calendar. And one of the homeowner association representatives from the Port Streets, they wanted more time to review the item.
And Mayor and members of council, I think we've, we agree with that and we're prepared to pull that item from the agenda tonight and do a little more correspondence with those folks that didn't get the word.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols is now here, so that we're even getting closer to having a majority of the council here. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Ridgeway, do you have anything on the consent calendar that you'd like to discuss? Mr. Selig?
No.
And Mr. Nichols, do you have anything that you have on the consent calendar that you'd like to discuss?
The one item was on, just a payment of the bill in Big Canyon, oh, Morning Canyon. I didn't understand exactly. I mean, it should be a ten-second item on how that didn't get paid last year, or was it a carryover?
Would you like the explanation right now?
Yeah, I think I can give that to you right now.
I have the same question.
Members of council, exactly what happened was, as you may recall, this project also involved some private property work that we agreed to do to help repair some slope failures adjacent to the project. So these private property owners deposited, I think it was like somewhere around $150,000 into our account. And at the end of the project, they were to receive a refund if anything was left. And I think what happened was when we finalized the project in the accounting, we did not account for releasing that money back to that homeowner. So therefore, we had the money in the account, but we inadvertently released it back into the general fund when we should have held on to that and carried it over for final payment. So it's really essentially an accounting issue here.
But the payment that we received back last year offset fully the payment we're asking for now, or is there some excess?
Yeah, well, it's not 100 percent. I mean, there were some other issues, too. We did have some outstanding bills that we owed the Irvine Company. When we did our project, we did damage their golf cart path. And there was some negotiation that was ongoing that has been finalized now. So we have come to an agreement on what the value of those repairs are. So there was some additional dollars in that as well.
My only other question with regard to that is, were we paying for slope failure on the particular home that had the swimming pool up above it?
Yeah, the property that had the slope failure, they paid a share into our project. In the end, it was easier.
Well, are they the winners of the lawsuit on the people across the way?
Yes, yes. These are the people who apparently got into a lawsuit with the neighbors and were awarded some amount of money. But in their repair process, in order for us to properly do our project, it required them to repair their slope at the same time. So it made more sense for us to, for them to pay us, do the work. And they paid for all of the work on their property, so there was no public funds expended on their property.
Okay. Well, I certainly would like to have known if there was, because they already received a large amount of money for that, which there were questions about.
Okay. Thank you very much. I intend to pull item three, which has to do with the closure of streets for the 100 years between the piers and get staff, a staff report which will indicate to the public some of the streets that are being closed and some of the traffic control issues that are related to the 100 years between the piers. And so I think it'd be a good opportunity for, to begin the education process for what's going to happen on October 8th.
Yeah, following up on that, it did say that there was supposed to be maps attached, but there were no maps in my book.
And that will be explained tonight. The maps are still in preparation. They should be available tomorrow.
Okay. Well, can we put that off then till, for two weeks? Is there a rush on this closure issue?
We really want to get the notice out to the public as soon as possible.
We really need to get the process started, so everybody knows, because that's only going to be two weeks before the event. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Rosansky, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss related to consent calendar items?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then our first item on the...
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, could I take just a minute to make an introduction? We have in the audience tonight a unique situation in that we have two directors of recreation and senior services that are with us. Mr. Wes Morgan, who is Marie Knight's replacement, came to work yesterday, and he's going to be working with Marie this week, this being Marie's last week. And I thought it would be a good opportunity to introduce Wes to the council and have him give just a few brief remarks about his background and being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As City Manager said, I started yesterday. I am a lifetime county resident. I have 32 years in with cities, 16 with Fullerton, 16 with Pointa Park, and I did retire in July. And my wife is out working as an assistant city manager now. But this opportunity came up, and I couldn't run here fast enough to get the opportunity to work here in Newport Beach. I am extremely excited about it. I've been coming to this city for 45 years, on my 250 Scrambler back in the 60s, and I am just so glad to be here. And so with that, I just thank you for the opportunity and look forward to working with you.
You have some really big shoes to step into.
I understand. So far, I can't fit into them, but they're...
No, they're little, very little.
Big, little shoes.
Very little, big shoes.
A little pumps, yeah. How do you look in heels, Wes?
I wouldn't recommend you trying those on.
Well, thank you. Welcome aboard, Wes, and we will expect a tremendous amount from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Our first item is compressed natural gas fueling station development. That must be Mr. Harmon.
It is. It's an issue he's been looking forward to providing to the city council for a little while now.
About a year, as long as I've been here, I think. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I do have a very brief PowerPoint presentation, kind of show the council where we are at with the natural gas program and our recommendation of which direction we head to. On my clicker here, Chris has me set up with a fancy clicker. In late 2000, early 2001, the air quality management district implemented several rules with the purpose of decreasing the use of diesel fuel in heavy equipment throughout their district. The AQMD adopted three rules that specifically impact the city of Newport Beach. The first, 1186, requires that the city cannot purchase any diesel street sweepers after, I believe it's July of 2002. The second rule, 1198, has the same requirement, except for our waste collection fleet, waste collection recycling fleets. And Rule 1196 impacts all of the rest of the heavy equipment, such as street dump trucks, street maintenance equipment. And again, we cannot purchase or could not purchase heavy-duty diesel equipment from July 2002. As you can see there, the last bullet, city's fleet, we have 25 refuse trucks, sweepers, and about 25 heavy-duty other vehicles. This has had a major impact on the city's fleet. Since 2002, the city has not purchased any refuse collection equipment. Council policy dictates that we replace, or look at replacing, refuse collection equipment after eight years. Of the 25 refuse vehicles, we have 16 that have exceeded that eight-year time limit. In fact, we have a handful that are at the 13- and 12-year service level. So it's starting to have a negative impact on the city. We feel it's time to move forward with our alternative fuel program, to follow the AQMD mandates, and start replacing our heavy equipment with compressed natural gas. There's two types of fuel that can be used for heavy-duty vehicles. The first is compressed natural gas and liquefied natural gas. And we are recommending the compressed natural gas for a few reasons, and there's a big one that's not on there, and I'll hit that in a minute. But the compressed natural gas is available for light and medium-duty vehicles as well. In other words, you can purchase a sedan or a small SUV on compressed natural gas. And what the city is looking at is not just a program for our heavy-duty vehicles, but we have the type of service vehicle, such as building inspectors or other vehicles that are in town every day, that would be ideal for compressed natural gas. So, you know, we will be looking at the entire fleet, not just heavy equipment. On CNG, all of the equipment, storage tanks, compressors, are above ground, so they're easy to maintain, easier to maintain and see any problems. And the dispensers on compressed natural gas are very similar to a gas clean pump. On liquefied natural gas, you have to put the gloves on and the, you know, the big vest and bulletproof stuff and everything else. So, you know, it's a little more intense for the LNG than the CNG.
What about safety?
Safety on CNG, we feel, is much greater. And I do have representatives from Clean Energy, and I'm going to talk about them in a minute. But the liquefied natural gas, again, you have to wear that protective equipment, and it's very easy, if you don't or do it wrong, that you can be seriously hurt. We don't see that with the compressed natural gas at all. So this last year, we've been looking at the transition of the city fleet to a CNG, alternative fuel program. And we partnered with, in these discussions, with Clean Energy Fuels, a company located in Seal Beach. And there's some information on the company there, but they are the largest in North America, 160 stations, and projected to sell approximately 66 million gallons, a gallon equivalent of the natural gas, this year. So they have a tremendous amount of experience in the natural gas field. And you can see the, see fourth bullet there. They do focus on public agencies. And then they set up these public fueling stations where taxis, shuttle buses, the public, school fleets can all participate in that, in that fueling station. I'll talk about that in a minute, too. So we've been in discussions with Clean Energy, and some of the benefits and some of the things that they are proposing for the city of Newport Beach is that they will construct, operate, and maintain a public-access CNG station. That gives us 24/7 access to their service, their mechanics, their on-call people. And also with a public-access station, obviously, there's credit cards. The public can use it. If you have a CNG vehicle, you can drive by, much like a regular gas station. You can run the car, fuel up, and you'll be billed for the fuel. And Clean Energy takes care of all of that, point-of-sale transactions. The fueling station, obviously, will be available to all city vehicles, so it gives us a station to use. And it's a proactive step in reducing air pollution. And it shows that the city is interested in environmental responsibility and that we're heading in that, in the clean-air direction. The total cost, if the city were to put this station in of its own resources, would run about $800,000 to $1 million. These stations aren't cheap by any stretch. So the, again, Clean Energy would foot the cost for that station. And Clean Energy has worked with us and will continue to work with us on acquiring grants for our program. And you can see two of them there that we've received already, and thanks to them working with us. We did receive $250,000 towards that construction of the station I just mentioned. And we received just shy of $58,000 for the purchase of CNG refuse trucks. I just want to throw in right, real quick, as we may, that issue will come up at future council meeting. That $57,000 was for six trucks, and that doesn't begin to cover the incremental costs from a diesel to a CNG vehicle, but obviously, it helps. And we will work with Clean Energy to hopefully secure some more additional funds for those trucks.
But Mark, can you convert our diesels to CNG?
No. It would basically be an engine replacement and tank mounts, and it would be, quite honestly, be more than the trucks at this point would be worth doing that.
And what's a gallon of gas?
I'm going to touch on that in, real quick. And then, well, actually, it's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ridgeway, it is up there. It's next after the grants. The current CNG cost, if we were to do this today, and again, it fluctuates, you know, like gasoline probably by the hour, but if we were to do this today, the cost to the city in CNG gallon equivalent would be $1.78, and the current cost for diesel is $2.78.
And do you get the same kind of mileage off of...
We do.
Comparable?
Comparable, that's correct. And then in addition to that, with a station located at the city yard, we would receive a royalty payment to the city for every gallon equivalent sold to private parties, to the taxis, and to those other things, to those other users other than the city, we would get a royalty payment. I do not have that dollar amount. I think that was a question that was coming up, but that is something that we would discuss with Clean Energy. Now, I'll jump ahead. Our recommendation at this point is for, if council supports this direction, is to direct staff to work with Clean Energy to develop an agreement and bring that back to council. And obviously, it will have much more detail at that point, but we would get a royalty for the gallons sold.
So in terms of your initial, this $1 million capital investment, the taxpayers would be paying for the construction of that facility, and then they would then be selling, using that facility to sell to the general public?
No, they would, Clean Energy, a private company, would pay for the installation of the station, the entire cost, not the taxpayer. And we would receive a royalty, when they sell gallons for $2.44, whatever it is at the pump, for your user, for the taxi users or the private citizen user, we would get a royalty payment off of that sale.
Okay. Then what would your, the $1 million initial capital investment refer to?
If we would not, I'm sorry, that total station cost of a million is Clean Energy, yeah, not the city.
I do have a question, though. There's 60,000, well, there's $10,000 a truck that were being subsidized, but what is the cost of a CNG truck versus a diesel truck?
Well, we went out to bid, because we put a bid out there for CNG versus a diesel, because we wanted that information. It was about $35,000 to $40,000 more per truck.
And how long are we responsible for running this truck, based on the fact that we got this $10,000 grant?
Well, we're not, as part of the equation to get the grant funds, we have to put a life on that truck.
And what is that life?
And we put the eight-year, the council policy eight-year life.
Okay. Just a second, Dick, for just a minute. It's my understanding that we don't have a choice. We have to convert to CNG, right?
That's absolutely correct. We cannot, we cannot buy a diesel truck today.
So it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, it doesn't really matter what life that grant places on the truck, because we have to do it whether we get the grant or not.
But we could repair our present trucks.
Well, we have trucks, Councilmember Nichols, we have trucks that were, you know, they are designed, if you will, manufactured to withstand about eight to 10 years, collecting refuse, packing refuse. And again, we have trucks that are 12 and 13 years old. There's only so many times you can tape them together before it's time for new equipment.
Okay. Mr. Ridgeway?
Thanks.
I'm trying to get control of the meeting again.
Well, you can have control. Well, first of all, the Orange County Sanitation District has a station in front at Ellis. Is that a CNG? Do you know, or does anybody, they're shaking their head. Okay, I just want to make, because I see taxis and buses and trucks come up there. And the, Dawn made a statement that we have to convert to CNG. I'm not sure that's quite correct. We could do LNG also.
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to correct that for anybody in the audience, but we cannot use diesel.
That is absolutely correct.
Okay.
But I want to make one more point on the LNG, if I may, because it's a critical point. LNG fuel has to be trucked in and stored in the yard. Or CNG, we bring right in off the Southern California Gas Company's main line, right off industrial. So there is a lot less chance of fuel supply being interrupted on CNG than LNG. Because right now, I know Long Beach is trying to put an LNG facility in, but right now, most of your LNG is being shipped from Arizona.
Okay. Councilmember Rosansky had a question.
Well, a couple, just quick ones. As far as what we're going to pay for the gas, or the compressed natural gas, is that part of what you need to work out in your agreement? I mean, is there, is it going to be like market plus whatever?
It's going to be cost plus.
I mean, I'm assuming that as a fairly large purchaser, we can, if we want to install our own station, we can negotiate a better price than what maybe an individual could. And so I'm assuming that because they're making an investment, obviously, they have to have a return on their investment, so we're going to be paying more probably than we could if we just bought the gas ourselves and built our own station.
Right. We could, that's probably correct. We could invest the million. I hesitate a little bit as a big user. With our fleet, this isn't something we have to go out now and buy all the CNG equipment. So, you know, it might be a few trucks this year and to next, and then a couple additional trucks.
No, but eventually, I mean, we're talking about trucks, you're talking about sedans and SUVs and police vehicles. I mean, potentially, it could be hundreds of vehicles that would use this technology. Not that I'm saying that we're going to do that, but that's what you indicated. So what I'm getting at is there will be some type of a, you know, market plus or whatever type of deal.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the other question I had, because you are touting the CNG versus the LNG, I'm assuming there's some benefit to LNG over CNG. Is it that maybe you can store more of it on the truck, or less fill-ups, or things like that, or...
You know, if there is...
There must be a reason why people will use LNG as opposed to CNG.
Well, more people by far use CNG than LNG. Quite honestly, maybe that's a good question for the Clean Energy people. They do market both types of fuel, I believe, and I'll introduce them here in a couple minutes, and then I'll let them answer that question.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Ridgeway?
Just a, to, if we're pulling from a gas line, Southern California gas, I guess, then we have to compress this into a tank, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then we transfer from that tank to a modified tank on the vehicle?
To a dispenser, to a modified tank on the vehicle.
Yeah, okay. And to convert or to compress it, you have, obviously, we have some fairly significant equipment that, is it noisy? I mean, talk to me about this compression.
Well, I've been to several of these stations. In fact, Councilmember Nichols and I were at a station just a couple, few days ago. And the generator at that station, and this is city of Irvine, they have a public-private station, much like we're hoping to get, that generator was, I believe, I want to say 10, 12 years old, and that tended to be a little noisy when running. No, I would say, in a corporate yard with sanitation trucks and fuel pumps and generators, I would certainly say it didn't stand out. The pumps, my understanding today, the compressors today are much quieter than this 12-year-old compressor. Other than that, there's no noise to the station at all.
Well, why wouldn't I just put one of these in my garage and get a car that runs on CNG?
Well, and you, I believe you can. I believe there's these little, these little units you can actually plug in and fuel your own car. Problem is, how far do you want to go from home? You know, you might want, you might want to swing through my place, fuel up on your way to somewhere else, so...
Well, I mean, what if I have a 20-gallon tank? Can I just, I'm going to go in, of course, my problem is if I go one direction, I've got to find somebody at the other end, I guess.
Right. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the users in a second, but we feel, or at least, they're investing the money, they feel there's a good market there.
Okay. But this is not a little tank, and a 20 gallons is a big tank, and it's 6,500 PSI is the rating on the tank. 6,500, not 65. What if somebody hit you?
Well, these tanks, you know, they're the ones that these gentlemen here drive are mounted well into the trunk. I'm sure they're, you know, they've been tested, rated for collisions. We know, I don't know of any problems they've had with the CNG tanks. There's been no problems at corporate yards that I'm aware of. Councilmember Nichols is correct, they're rated at 6,500, the fuel sits in there at 3,600. So you're not, you know, you're not at the limit of the tank, structure of the tank.
Mark, I think the county has required all of the taxis that serve John Wayne Airport...
Yeah, and let me just shoot through this, and then I'm going to talk about that in one sec. Station layout, that's an outline of the city yard there. That would be Superior, obviously, running north-south, and then somewhat east-west is industrial. There's the gate entrance, currently, the large gate entrance off industrial, right there where that, thank you, I was looking for a pointer, right there, that little square where the pointers highlighting now, that's the current fueling station. This would be an additional dispenser at that site. This would be a public-access facility. So the fence, we would install an additional fence at the back of that little square, so that we would still maintain the security of the yard, and people would be able to come on.
Would it be in here, or is it going to allow them to exit out on Superior?
It would, they would enter and exit out on industrial, not Superior. But there's a light there, so they would enter, much like our equipment does, we usually use industrial, not Superior. So they would enter and exit off of there. Now, as City Manager indicated, the taxi system, in fact, I believe, and they can correct me, Clean Energy people can correct me if I'm wrong, but they just put on an additional 125 CNG taxis at John Wayne Airport. And this area, there's a CNG station in Irvine up by the 5 freeway, and I believe there's one in the Huntington Beach area, but there's nothing in this area for the taxis, for the shuttles, for private citizens to use. So this would, this would fill a niche, if you will, for the natural gas fueling in this area. And we think the shape of the yard, where we could put the security fence, the egress to the facility, ingress and egress would just be ideal for a fueling station.
Mark, is there any byproduct from the combustion of CNG?
No, but save that question, too, and I'll let Clean Energy do that. But, no, there's no venting, there's no, there's no byproduct from the tank systems, the storage tanks at all.
No, I mean, once it combusts in the car, what's a byproduct?
Water, CO2, and water.
CO2 and water. CO2 is inert, it's not a...
CO2 is what you get from off-combustion, so it's not much different. It's cleaner in that there isn't a lot of oxygen byproducts. So basically, you generally get just CO2 and water, you don't get a lot of...
Isn't CO2 the greenhouse gas that we're concerned about?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ratio of water to CO2 is a little higher with methane than it is with other hydrocarbons, because it's got four hydrogens to one carbon, but it produces CO2.
But again, for heavy equipment, the South Coast Air Quality Management District has certified as a clean fuel. This is a little bit what I was talking about, the taxi systems, those are the new Crown Vic taxis from the airport. Yes, and they do have to be alternative fuel to operate at the airport. That's that CNG infrastructure gap in the coastal area here. Residents and businesses that use CNG will have access. There's a delivery of 100 new taxicabs at the airport. And we have other fleets, you know, the shuttles, the vans, consumer vehicles, other public agencies are also going to CNG, and there may be a very good chance that they would also utilize the station. Timeline, if we were to do something, I'll just run through this real quick. If we direct, if you direct staff to negotiate an agreement, some terms, and the conditions, a lot of what we just talked about this afternoon, we could come back to city council with that agreement, hopefully in October. That would then kick in the process of the permitting, five, six months with that. Construction of the fueling station is, say, nine months or so, 10 months. And then possibly October 2007, we would open the station to the general public.
What, do we, have we determined whether or not we need to have a Costa Mesa permit since that fueling station is 100 percent in Costa Mesa?
That's not been determined.
Okay.
That would be one of the permit processes.
Maybe we could change the sphere of influence and annex it back to Newport.
I think we try.
Dave and I have talked to Alan Roder.
We're working on that.
He doesn't see an issue that would be wrapped up in any of the other issues that we have. It makes good sense for Costa Mesa. Costa Mesa has some heavy equipment that is under the same rules and regulations, so this would benefit them, too.
Has Alan talked to his... Has Alan talked to his council members yet?
All the time.
Reality check.
Just a couple of quick pictures of CNG stations. What a dispenser. I think the bottom one, the one on the right there, that dispenser closer to the left is a good snapshot of what a dispenser looks like. Not much different or not much larger than a gasoline dispenser. That's downtown LA and Santa Ana. And then next steps. Again, staff is asking your direction. We'd like to continue to meet with Clean Energy. We'd like to start putting together an agreement, an operating agreement with all of these factors in it, and come back to City Council.
Since we're a public agency, is Clean Energy the only group in Southern California that we should be talking to? Or should this be something that is competitively bid?
I'm not aware, and we can certainly do that research and bring that back. I'm not aware of another company such as Clean Energy that does the design, build, operate for municipalities. And again, the agencies that I'm aware of actually use Clean Energy. But we can certainly, there's manufacturers that will make tanks separate, compressors separate, and you can piece them together and put it in yourself. I'm not aware of a firm that does what Clean Energy does. I would be remiss, I do want to introduce Peter Grace, Vice President with Clean Energy, and Charles Oshler, who is the Account Manager with Clean Energy. They're both here, and I know they both can answer some of those questions if you'd like them to come up and get some technical questions.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I've got a question for Mark. What's, what are our alternatives to doing this outside of building our own facility? I mean, if we didn't have one at the city yard and we didn't do a deal with these people, what...
I think you, Councilmember Selig, I think you hit the nail on the head. We would have to do it, so it would either build our own or go through Clean Energy. And I would advise if we were to build...
Would you consider driving to Irvine, or, I mean, where are these other ones located?
It's Irvine at the 5 freeway, and honestly, you couldn't, you would have to buy more trucks because you would be spending a significant amount of time driving refuse trucks. It's a little different if it's a car shooting over Irvine, but a refuse truck.
Is there no other facilities in any other cities close to us, Huntington Beach?
At Ellison 405. Ellison 405.
Sanitation district.
Sanitation district.
So that's the closest one?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be really economically or time-wise as sensible to do that. So, but what I was about to say, if we do put in our own station, I would recommend that it would then just be a station for city use, and we would not have the, excuse me, the public use benefit that I see through Clean Energy, because then we would have to do the billing, invoicing, monitoring of the different accounts. Right now, you pull up to a Clean Energy facility, you can use a credit card, one of their cards, and it's a pretty unique system or a good system.
If we just did our own facility, would it cost a million dollars if it was a closed facility to the public?
Yeah, there's no, yes, it would.
Still cost a million bucks?
Yeah, there's no additional cost by making it a public facility.
Do, on their credit cards, do they give airline mileage?
That's a good question for them.
Okay, I'll ask them that, but I do have another question on a more serious note, and, oh, and now it slipped my mind, but...
We won't wait for you. Anybody else?
Well, my, oh, go ahead.
Well, I do want to hear from Clean Energy.
Yeah, I did, I'd like to get my question answered about the purchase of the two technologies.
One of the things I'd be interested in, you know, we can talk offline or get further information, would be when we're talking about fleet replacement, what are we talking about there? How many trucks? What's the cost? You know, that would be helpful to understand sort of the big picture there.
Yeah, that was my question, Mark. Exactly, I mean, at what point in time do we have to, how many vehicles do we have to buy to make this a good return for us? In other words, we're going to have these guys build this, and do we have to build, do we have to buy five or 10 or 15, you know? Where are we?
They're asking that the city commit to, in the next two years, to have, I believe it's three, six, it's getting bigger.
So they sell the...
In the next two years, yeah, yes, they're asking that the city commit to purchasing six CNG trucks, not necessarily refuse trucks, but CNG units. And quite honestly, that's, we need to move forward and start replacing some of these vehicles, so I don't see that as necessarily a challenge. I think that needs to happen anyway.
When we decide to purchase one of those vehicles, what is the delay time from placing order to receiving the vehicle?
I have heard as much as a year out to order a CNG truck. Now, some people say it's not quite that bad, it's nine, 10 months. I'm a little more pessimistic, I'll stick with a year. The market for these CNG, especially refuse trucks, is huge, because the mandates is pushing everybody in that direction.
You know, the 25 refuse trucks, five sweepers, and...
25 other vehicles.
25 other vehicles, does that include utilities vehicles also? Or is that general services vehicles?
I'm going to look to my, that's the entire fleet.
Okay. I got a couple more questions. What's your projection on the percentage of city use versus public use as this thing gets up and operating? And I don't know how you measure it in pounds or gallons or whatever.
Well, we talk about it in gallons. At the initial start, the public use, I would guess, would far outweigh the city use, simply because we don't have the equipment yet. Again, we would move at this, the six vehicles over two years would be the maximum I would recommend bringing into the fleet. We've got mechanics that have to learn about these vehicles, whereas these taxis, shuttle buses, some of these other pieces of equipment are running today. And our best guess is that they'll start using the station immediately.
Yeah, well, I'd like, I'd like to see some, I mean, no one's investing a million dollars without running some numbers on, you know, payback on their investments, so I'd like to see some of the numbers somewhere along the way here in terms of, you know, the projected use and what's, you know, how much the public is going to be using it and the revenue that's going to be coming in. Because in essence here, we're taking, we're getting a public benefit out of it for our trucks, but we're also allowing a private enterprise to come in and use city property to sell to the public.
That's correct.
So I'd like to see how all that works, all the numbers on that at some point.
I guess one of the other concerns I have is that you really only have two interests in and out of your yard. And is that, are they, an increase in the number of vehicles in and out that are non-city vehicles going to impact your operations, particularly in the morning?
No, and we looked at that very closely. We would still, we need to keep in mind, we would still, the city would have access in and out of Industrial as well. That gate, that's security gate, back gate, would be open when we're operating, because obviously, the yard is full. When we visited the Irvine station, they have far more vehicles on CNG. And I've been out there, I think, four times now. The taxis, shuttles, they're not on a set schedule like refuse trucks are, so they drift in. I never saw one waiting for another one. They come in at all different times. I'm being told from Clean Energy, is a lot of their fueling is at night. They fuel in the morning at their Santa Ana facility before going to John Wayne Airport, and that'll carry them through to later afternoon and evening. Our trucks fuel up at about 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, so I don't see a conflict at all.
And you feel that you can adequately fence off the rest of the yard that were after-hours operations are going to keep your yard secure?
Absolutely. That was one of the first important things that we discussed.
Do we need to move this item along? Any other council members wish to ask questions before we get to the natural gas people up here? Why don't you gentlemen come forward and tell us what you're going to do for us?
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, City Council, my name is Peter Grace. I'm the Vice President with Clean Energy. This is Charlie Oshler. And Charlie and I have been working with the staff the past year or so to go over this. We're both Newport Beach residents. I've been a resident here in Little Isle for 13 years. Charlie grew up here, went to, went to Cronomar, but we won't hold that against him. To just kind of bounce around and give answers to some things that came up, yes, you get your airline miles if you use your own Visa, MasterCard. As Mark mentioned, the traffic as we see it from the public fleet, which would be 100% of the station volume today, certainly, we anticipate a lot of it coming in after-hours on weekends, at nights. The taxi guys who service John Wayne Airport come down here. If you're out around the bars and restaurants in town, you see a lot of them running around at night in the weekends, which wouldn't impact the city at all, but they're not the type that would show up at 5:30 in the morning to fill up when Mark's trash trucks or other heavy-duty vehicles are filling up. The gas comes, I think it was Councilman Ridgeway, it comes out of the pipeline that's existing there from Southern California gas. It comes underground, it comes out and is compressed. Pressure's taken up to much higher pressure, and it's stored in vessels above ground, and it stays there. Once that gas gets in those vessels that were on the picture, it stays there until a car comes up and fills up, and then it does kick in and replenish the supply there. So it goes from above-ground storage into the vehicle that's going to be fueled. We have about 50-some stations, a Clean Energy has in Southern California. We don't have a station here. There's no real public access station along the coast. The closest one is, as you said, at Ellison and the sanitation district off of 405. And then the next one up is in Seal Beach, up that way, and then Irvine inland, but it's really closer to the 5 down off Irvine, down by...
Santa Ana.
In Santa Ana, that's right. The state, from a safety aspect, there are no known fatalities at all of a CNG accident with vehicle. The tanks are heavy-duty metal wrapped, they are under pressure, they store the fuel at 3,600 PSI in the vehicles, they are crash-tested. We've got a whole safety video that we'd be more than happy to share with the staff that goes through and demonstrates the kind of testing they go through. It's really pretty exceptional, and from a safety standpoint, it's pretty good. The emissions of the vehicle, the taxi guys and the newest 2006 Crown Victorias is, has a super ultra-low emission vehicle, excuse me, super ultra-low emissions rating from carb. It's the cleanest burning vehicle out there from a light-duty perspective, and the heavier-duty vehicles are substantially cleaner than those that use diesel. The difference on the CNG versus the LNG, Mark's right, the CNG is available from the vehicles, the passenger cars, to the light-duty pickup trucks, vans, as well as a heavier-duty street sweeper or refuse trucks, where really, the LNG is only in the, dealt within the larger vehicles, buses and trash trucks and heavy-duty trucks, simply because principally, they need more storage onboard their vehicle for the range that they have, and weight is an issue. We have a lot of trash trucks and buses that run compressed natural gas versus LNG. There is a difference in the safety requirements. You really wouldn't have a public access LNG station here in Newport Beach. It wouldn't do any good for any of the light-duty vehicles. So it's really more of a specialized controlled fleet environment where a city or a transit district might have, a truck operator might have some heavy-duty vehicles, and they're really one person filling them up. It's really an apples and an orange type of comparison with a station like we're talking about here for Newport Beach. And yet, one other thing, I want to make sure that the, Mark's right, is that we, Clean Energy, are proposing to put in the capital required to build the station.
Peter?
Yeah.
I don't know how to ask this question, but when gas comes out from the gas company, it comes out in cubic feet per what, per thousand? Is that how they measure it?
Right.
No, BTU, 100,000 BTU. They're measured in 100,000 BTU a therm.
That's right.
So when it comes out, but my question is, what's the conversion ratio for a gallon of compressed natural gas compared to the gas coming out of the pipe?
Well, what we do...
Or how many gallons do you get from one therm? What, how many is one therm? A thousand BTU?
100,000, but...
20, 125,000 BTUs in a gasoline gallon equivalent of natural gas. I think that answers your question.
100? Do that again.
125,000 BTUs in a gasoline gallon equivalent. We, when you pull up to a station, because people don't understand this, we price everything on the meter, on the, on the, the dial on the pumps, it measures it in gasoline gallon equivalents, just like you do at the gas station.
I'm just trying to figure the conversion, so...
It's 125,000 per gallon.
So how many, how many hundred thousands of BTUs can you put in a tank of, in the rear of your car?
Generally speaking, most of the light-duty vehicles would probably have somewhere between 11 and 15 gallons, gasoline gallon equivalents in the trunk of their car. A refuse truck might have 50, 60, depends on how many you store onboard, how many tanks you put on.
So that's going to be like 2 million BTU.
You mean, I'm...
15 gallon equivalent. For 10 gallons is 1.25.
Yeah. The conversion factor is 1.25 to convert thermes to gas gallon equivalents. That's the conversion factor.
I'm just trying to figure out how much money you're making there, that's all.
Oh, well, then, good luck on that, but it, there's about 100, 1.25 gallons of, they need to have 1.25 gallons of space for the same energy you put in a gallon of gas.
Got you. Okay, I think that we need to move along.
Thank you.
I have one question. Mr. Selig, you guys do all the talking here. What's the fill-up rate on, say, a 50-gallon tank of CNG versus going to a gas station for regular gas in time? How much longer or shorter does it take?
It's very comparable to filling up at the regular gasoline pump. It's, right, we're proposing about a five gallons per minute fill-up at this station, so that's very comparable throughout our other stations.
Okay, and then how many of these facilities have you built so far?
We have about 165 across the country in North America that we...
Okay, and to go to, a question was asked, Mark, are you aware of any competitors that do exactly what you do?
Well, we're not aware of anybody that would come in and put their own capital in to build a station with basically a very limited commitment out of the city to buy any vehicles, so, I mean, we don't know that a lot of people do that. We do it because we, we're committed to the natural gas vehicle business. We think there's a lot of good from a public standpoint, and we think that there's enough market out there that people will use the station that will hopefully get an adequate return on our capital investment over time. It's not any quick hit, we're not going to get rich overnight, that's for sure.
Thanks.
What would be the length of term that you're looking for as far as a commitment from the city to give you exclusive operating rights for that facility that you put in?
Well, that was something we worked out with the city staff, but a normal agreement, we would propose 10 years.
Okay.
I have a question, and that is, the NFPA seemed to indicate for CNG that the fueling rate would be less than this by maybe 1/5th. And I, and my question is, is what standard are you using for that, particularly your breakaway nozzle and so forth?
Not sure if I understand the question.
The brass break, or bronze-looking breakaway nozzle that you have, that, who makes that and what standard are you using for that equipment? Because I'm just saying, when I looked in the NFPA, mine is like a 2002. I'm not perfectly up to date. You've got to buy these damn things all the time. My point is, is that they were saying that rates of refueling were like 1/5th, or should be 1/5th of the rate that you're doing it. And I just wondered, what, so the standard must have changed since that time, and my question is, what standard are you using?
The rates are dependent on the compressor size that you put in, or in this case, if you put in two or one, and that just depends on, that gives you your rate of fueling, so...
So whose standards do you build that part of the station to?
Same ones that you're deciding on. And we can get you the current one, and we'll, I don't know who the manufacturer of the nozzle is, but we're happy to research that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, I would be interested in that.
Peter, just one last question. Why is a nation, if we're so dependent on foreign oil, are we not going to CNG?
That's a good question. I think in the United States, there are approximately 130,000 natural gas vehicles of all kinds, sizes, small, big, medium-sized, about 5 million in the rest of, in the world. So we are quite behind the rest of the world, particularly countries in South America, Europe, and Asia, in terms of adapting natural gas as a vehicle fuel. We think it's the way to go. of adapting natural gas as a vehicle fuel. We think it's the way to go. Ninety-seven percent of the natural gas used in the United States is produced in Canada or the United States, so I don't know, it's a great question.
Well, the entire state of Wyoming is sitting on a natural, or coal seam gas. I mean, there's more natural gas in the United States than there is anywhere in the world.
And I think, simply though, I think, you know, the infrastructure is an issue, it's not really adaptable towards the general public, although you could have a station and put in a unit, as described at home, and fill up there with a home unit. That's the type of operation where you do it really for overnight, so in your car, you might get four or five gallons at night over, you know, in the evening time. It's not the kind of thing where you can pull in, these sort of stations that operate very comparably to that of a gasoline station in terms of the speed with which you fill up your vehicle, but they're a heck of a deal.
That's true. Your house line is so small and under such low pressure, it would take a long time to...
Right, you're right, and they generate about, just to give you an example, Charlie's saying, we can fill up about five gallons per minute at one of our pumps, that gives you about a half a gallon per hour, so it's night and day. It's perfect for your own use, it's great.
Okay, if we need any other questions?
Thank you.
Because we have two other items on our agenda. Thank you very much, gentlemen. So could we get some council direction as to whether we should at least proceed to come up with a proposal to bring back the...
I don't think we have a choice, Homer, I mean, I'll take, you know, just let's go forward. I just can't imagine...
I would support that also. Is there anybody that objects to going forward? Mr. Nichols?
I think we should do just a little bit more internal work on this. I was aware that we worked very hard to get rid of natural gas vehicles because we've had better operational, diesels have worked better operationally for us, and so when Neder's House was here, we worked to get rid of these things, and there was reasons, and basically, yes, we have an older fleet because of that, because we have to repair them, but we, I mean, we've done pretty well maintenance-wise and so forth, and I would caution that you, I think we need to find out more of this. I also calculated roughly what the average-sized station they have is, and what they have is what would be considered a small gasoline station, so the amount of fuel they're loading relative to a gasoline station that you would see is like a three-hose gasoline station, one that would not be built today economically. You would build one that can refuel six to ten cars, this would be like a three-car fueling station. They only pump the equivalent of about sixty thousand gallons of gasoline a month, and that's considered a small station, not a big one. So these are, even though their facilities are pretty big, and they do have fleets come in, the total amount that goes through these stations up till now has been pretty small, and the total number of vehicles out there is pretty small, so maybe that's why we're not seeing any safety problems too, we don't know. This, when you handle high-pressure compressed gas on trucks and so forth, it's not considered a no problem, it's considered that you have to do this certain ways in order to maintain its safety, and for example, it's not a problem if it's open, but put this in a boat, or put this in some vehicle that's enclosed, a boat was a particular example used, and boy, you really have safety after safety after safety.
But we're not proposing a facility to handle boats at this location.
I do understand that, Don.
And I think that we really are not that interested in an extremely high-volume station either, because we don't have the ins and outs, driveways, and that type of thing to handle a very large volume, but I do believe that it's our responsibility to work towards cleaning the air for our fleet and making sure that we are responsible managers of our environment also. So I think that I feel that we need to go forward and support this. Does anybody else in the council object to going forward?
I don't think that our...
I don't object, I would like a little bit better analysis maybe of the competing technologies, but I think that we're headed in one direction or another, and so we need to move in that direction.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, wait just a second.
Public?
Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Ray Simmons, I'm a resident Newport Beach and a Ford dealer in Los Angeles, and I have delivered all of these taxi caps, natural gas, I've built them, sell them in the last two years, and it's a great product. And I can't go into it all, but I think we should really think hard about this, it's a great product.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to comment on this? Seeing none, let's go forward to beach sand study and monitoring program. Who's going to make that presentation? Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Batum. Well, I'll start off, I'll give you the intro. As you may recall, some time ago, we had an issue in West Newport regarding putting sand on the beach and whether we really needed to do that or not, and unfortunately, the data was kind of scattered, and we didn't really have a lot of good answers, so as a result of that, you authorized in your last budget approval to move forward and do a study on essentially the state of our Newport Beach coastline. So we've retained the firm of Moffett Nickel, and with us tonight is Chris Webb from Moffett Nickel, who will kind of go through this report, and since we have less time, we'll hopefully get through it pretty quick, but essentially give you kind of an overview of what's really going on out there in the way of beach sand, and what we need to do in the future to keep our beaches healthy. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
And disclosure that I've checked his genealogy out, and we don't seem to be related, at least in the last hundred years.
Yes.
Don't start off with a centennial moment, then.
You can start clapping if you want, now or later.
Well, good afternoon, folks, I'm Chris Webb with Moffett Nickel, and we're a coastal engineering firm that does a lot of projects throughout the region, ranging from beach nourishment to wetland restoration, and sometimes we combine them both. And what I'm here to do, as is indicated by Mr. Batum, is to provide results of a study commissioned by council late last year and finished this year of the status of the beaches at Newport, and I just wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to do this project, because it was a fascinating study, and the beaches are beautiful, and of course, we'd love to help offer management suggestions so you can manage the resource. Essentially, what Newport Beach is, it's a sandspit that was built historically from sand coming from San Diego Creek, San Ana River, Los Angeles River, San Gabriel River, beaches up coast, moving toward the southeast that formed this closure in front of Lower Newport Bay. And sandspits are incredibly dynamic by their nature, they tend to be narrow and low, and they move around a little bit, and it was formed by nature, and it's dependent, it was dependent for its existence on natural sand supplies. Well, since this was formed, natural sand supplies have reduced greatly in extent by upland development and flood control works and installation of navigation works like the entrance channel jetties at Anaheim Bay, virtually cutting off probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the natural sand supply that built this sandspit. And in the meantime, urbanization of the sandspit occurred, you know, the development of the town occurred, and so we have a situation in which there's not a lot of natural sand coming into an existing site that needs it. So thus precipitates the study, and this is not unusual, this is very common throughout Southern California, not all cities are built in the vicinity of sandspits like this one, however, most Southern California cities along the coastline are experiencing loss of sand from upland development and retention of sediment behind flood control structures upstream, so less sediment comes to the shoreline, and they're looking for sources of sand for nourishment. This is a photograph of Balboa Peninsula in 1912, showing that it was vulnerable to flooding events during storm wave events typically from the south in the summertime or the fall. The barrier beach or sandspit was overwashed periodically. West Newport didn't escape the excitement either, it experienced this kind of activity in the thirties and then in the sixties, and you're probably well aware of that because it led to the federal project that resulted in the groynes and beach nourishment being constructed, and we'll talk about that more in a few minutes. The position of the shoreline throughout Newport Beach, and I'm going to focus right now on West Newport and Balboa Peninsula, we will definitely provide information on Big Corona as well, but the 1930s was an important decade, and the Corps of Engineers and the city of Newport Beach generated maps of the position of the shoreline in that decade. The reason it's important is that in 1935, right in the middle of it, a very large dredging project in Lower Newport Bay occurred, and about five million cubic yards of sand was put on Balboa Peninsula, and about two million cubic yards was put on West Newport. That's a lot of sand, and it widens the beach dramatically. This gives us a before-and-after view of what it was like before that project and what it was like immediately after, showing the benefit. Before that project happened in 1933, the shoreline was back along what's shown by the red line right here. In West Newport, it was just landward of Seashore Drive, so the first drawer of homes were essentially within the swash zone, and along Balboa Peninsula, the red line kind of jogs down the middle of the beach, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to hold this thing as steady as I can, but I'm always so good at that. The beach in 1933 at Balboa Peninsula was half as wide as it is today. Four years later, after that fairly large project occurred, the beach widened out, and as shown by the blue line in 1937, both Balboa Peninsula and West Newport Beach were significantly wider and remain wider for many, many years. The exception of that is in 1939, there was a major hurricane storm wave event that retreated the beach, but the beach came back and recovered because there was so much sand in the system right in the vicinity of the city. So this is an aerial photograph that shows West Newport in 1934, before the project, when it was narrow, and you can see, this is Thirty-Sixth Street right here, and just west of Thirty-Sixth Street, the beach was back to the alignment of Seashore Drive, which is right here, and the first drawer of homes were on piles, and life was intimate with the ocean, you might say, at that point. There was beach up in the vicinity of Black East and on the down-coast side or the southeast side of that groin at Thirty-Sixth Street, which was experimental. This is 1968, fast forward about thirty-four years or so, there was no additional nourishment at West Newport, at least nothing significant from that 1935 project up into the late 1960s, so it wasn't managed, it was basically left alone, and the beach stayed in place, it was used, but what happened is it gradually narrowed over time, because it's losing sand, it's not gaining sand, and in late summer, there was a cluster of storms, they were storm wave events from hurricanes happened close together, and in late August, the big one, Hurricane Liza, came through with twenty-five-foot waves and damaged the pier significantly, and at Forty-Third Street caused the beach to retreat back into some homes, they lost the foundation underneath their patios and their retaining walls, and it was in danger of actually damaging the houses, and the cavalry came to the rescue, and that's when the Army Corps of Engineers came and constructed the groin field, and it took five years, from 1968 to 1973, to construct all the groynes to their present length, and the Army Corps of Engineers put about two million cubic yards, if I remember right, of sand on West Newport from a variety of sources. And so what happened is, and I'll show you, if you can see, I know it's kind of tough to view this, but in 1963, before that project happened, this is a shoreline position map, and the black line right along the homes shows where the beach was in 1963. There wasn't a lot of beach there, there was a lot of water right up to the homes. That lasted the same way until 1968, became more acute, then the Army Corps of Engineers came in and did their project and advanced the beach out to be approximately where it is today, shown by the colored lines which were mapped in the 1990s. So it essentially stabilized West Newport, did good, performed well. At the same time, the Army Corps of Engineers initiated a project up near Surfside Beach, Surfside Colony and Sunset Beach, called the Surfside Sunset Project, which is to mitigate for lack of sand down to Huntington and Newport from installation of the navigation channel and the jetties at Anaheim Bay entrance. So the Army Corps of Engineers puts about two million cubic yards a year right at Surfside Colony, they're supposed to do it every five years, but they don't, they do it about every ten, but they do it, and that sand does work its way down to Newport. It's a feeder beach up there for all of Central Orange County, and it contributes sand all the way down to Newport Harbor entrance, essentially. That project is extremely important for this city to stay alive, so one of the recommendations that's going to come out of this report is that you stay on the Army Corps of Engineers to make sure they do their job. A sediment budget was put together by the Army Corps of Engineers, they did a detailed study of Orange County in 2002, and they looked at every beach in Orange County, and they gave us, which is what we needed, some understanding of the amount of sand that comes into Newport resides over time and the amount of sand that goes away, and what it tells us about Newport is the volume of sand retained within your city over time, which directly relates to the width of the beach, the greater the volume of sand, the wider the beach, and vice versa. What we see at West Newport is that there's an accretion or a gain of sand. Now, I need to put this in the time perspective, this was for the period from 1963 to 1993, approximately thirty years, okay? West Newport was accreting during that period and growing and becoming wider, or at least remaining stable. The reason is because approximately the same amount of sand was being put in the vicinity of West Newport or on West Newport from the San Ana River by the Army Corps of Engineers. So this growth in West Newport is directly related to ninety-five thousand cubic yards, or almost the equivalent amount of sand being placed by the Army Corps. The message is, the take-home message is, without this, if this stops, then this number, this volume of sand increase at West Newport also stops, and if there's no nourishment whatsoever from here on out, West Newport will shrink in sand volume by a rate of fifteen thousand cubic yards of sand per year, okay, which means if the city wishes to maintain the status quo at West Newport, it should consider a program where approximately at the rate of fifteen thousand cubic yards of sand per year, it's put at West Newport over whatever interval makes sense for you, every five years, every ten years, whatever, every one year, depending on when opportunities come up. Also, Balboa Peninsula seems to be losing sand too. All the data we looked at, which there's a lot, trust me, of beach widths and beach profiles and aerial photographs and guys walking the beach, et cetera, suggests that Balboa Peninsula is losing sand at a rate of about thirty thousand cubic yards per year. Some argue that it's a lot less than that, but there's no doubt that it's losing sand. The idea is to put enough sand in the vicinity of West Newport that it also would nourish Balboa Peninsula as well, to kill two birds with one stone, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. The existing condition then for West Newport is that there's a portion of West Newport that's growing, it's accreting, and it's up near the San Ana River. This is shown by the Reacher Beach that's just inboard of this blue line. There is a portion of West Newport that's not accreting, that's basically standing still and is relatively stable, as shown where these yellow lines are, and then there's a portion right in the heart of West Newport that we call the erosional hotspot, where the beach is not accreting, it tends to hold its position over time, but it's gradually dropping back and very, very subtly retreating. This is the spot right here where the chaos happened in 1968, right at Forty-Third Street, approximately.
In 1934 also.
In 1934 also, sir, correct. So what we're saying is that Newport's a little bit dynamic, and there is a problem here that could be solved by mining your surplus area here and bringing it over here periodically, okay? Now, Balboa Peninsula is also losing sand, I drew a red line there, which just suggests that it's retreating as well. The rate of retreat is greatest near Eighteenth Street at the point, and it's a lot less toward Island Street, further to the east, at Big Corona.
Can you go back to that picture?
Sure.
Where the sand is advancing, that sand is coming out of the river, or is that as a result of the Sunset Surfside?
You've asked a question that is very difficult to answer. The reason, it is a number of things. Sand coming out of the river is one of them, but there's a strange situation in Newport that, I'll try not to go too deep in it, but it's got to do with waves propagating through the canyon at the pier. As waves propagate through the canyon, coming from the south, highways in the summer, they tend to drive a current this way, a seasonal current that results in kind of a net deposition area right there. Some of it turns around in the winter and goes back toward Balboa Peninsula, but there's this rap, this growing area, and honestly, I don't know why it's growing to be, I don't know all the reasons why it's growing, but it is obviously doing that.
So you don't think it's coming from the north, then, at all?
It very well may be, and that's another component. Sand coming from Huntington Beach may be just getting locked... Sand coming from Huntington Beach may be just getting lodged and not make it any further down into the groin field. Or maybe it does, and then whoop, comes back during the high southern swell activity. So yes, it could be coming from the north also. It probably is coming from the north, coming from the river, being taken out of the groin field as well.
But that's also an area where they took sand from the river and built an island out here on at least two different occasions.
Correct.
So that it still has some shallow area that could be adding, being added to from that area, too.
Good point. So just moving then further east to Big Corona. We know Big Corona appears to be at least stable or advancing throughout a good portion of its reach, but we also see at the east end over here that there's a problem, an erosion scour, kind of a hotspot, you would call it, of erosion, right near the landing of the public access way at Inspiration Point that looks very vulnerable and would be a good target for sand placement in the future as management. So the results of the study suggest that each beach within Newport is either losing sand now or has the potential to begin losing sand in the future, like West Newport, if it's not losing it yet. And it really comes from the fact that historic sand supplies really aren't available anymore, and now the beaches have to rely on kind of man-made answers. And the man-made answers come in chunks. They come in sporadic episodic beach nourishment events. They're not as smooth an application all the time. So there seems to be a need to look for additional sources of sand to nourish the problem areas of Newport. And the city could take an approach of monitoring the beach to continue to collect data to better understand your beach, move sand from wide areas of the beach to narrow areas of the beach as appropriate, bring sand in from outside the city to supplement your existing source, and then keep on the federal government to make sure they're doing their job that they've committed to in the past up at Surfside and Sunset Beach. And examples of the measures you can take are, for monitoring, you can take beach profiles, which have been done historically throughout Orange County and Newport, and continue the record of data acquisition of beach profiles. What they tell you is the volume of sand within your city's beach over time. They give you a good long-term record, and they're very accurate. You could stay on the same locations as historic profiles have been taken. For shorter-term data, immediately after storm events, if you want to understand what your beach is doing next month, from month to month, you can take beach width measurements, which are as easy as walking on the beach with a GPS instrument and pinging the button when you leave the boardwalk and hitting it again when you hit the water line and calculating the distance between the points. And you do it once a month or every other month. Maybe it takes a half a day. And it'll give you a good short-term record of what your beach is doing after storm events and in-between those beach profile measurements. This has been done by the Corps of Engineers for years, and they're still doing it, and they're still doing it at Newport, but I can't, I don't know that they're going to keep doing that forever.
Question regarding Corona del Mar. We seem to be, well, the sand doesn't seem to be as high above water, particularly, we have like a spit along the water, but behind that, we're lacking sand. Can you give me some benefit there? What I'm saying, that's lower, and you can tell that because we're hitting water very rapidly. If you kick the sand, you go down four or five inches, and you hit water. Well, can you explain that? If our beach is increasing in size, is it just spreading? Or are we, I mean, why don't we see dry sand as well?
Well, the elevation of Big Corona Beach is about 10 and a half to 11 feet above mean lower low water, the low tide line on a tide chart. It's about, that's about four to five feet below the elevation of the beach in West Newport and about six to seven feet below the elevation of the beach at Balboa Peninsula. So it is lower. You're right. Honestly, I'm not sure why. It could have to do with maintenance practices or management practices. Maybe there's some raking occurring that keeps the elevation of the beach down. It's also a function of the run-up of waves up on the beach. What waves tend to do is, when they run up the beach, they deposit sand along their path, and they leave it right at the crest of the run-up. And they'll naturally make a beach profile or slope that reaches up to the point at which they reach. And so it's possible that the wave run-up at Corona del Mar isn't as high as it is along Balboa Peninsula or West Newport because of the fact that it's so sheltered and only exposed to a very narrow window of wave energy straight from the south. So typically, when the waves are high, it's a beach building period of time as opposed to an eroding period. And it just may form a natural beach berm that's lower than the rest of the city.
But now, I just wanted to get an order of magnitude again. It seemed to me that you were saying that we're maybe as much as six feet lower than...
It is. It's on the order of six feet lower than Balboa Peninsula. Five feet lower or four feet lower than West Newport, if I recall my numbers right.
So West Newport, you were having a buildup, but that's still a pretty flat beach, is what you're saying?
Correct.
But in the peninsula, that's a narrowing of the beach, and it's actually getting a little higher.
The peninsula seems to have been built...
Or have been higher.
It was built very high, apparently, and it's remained high. And I believe the wind blows the sand back on the back of the beach, continues to build it up. There could be beach maintenance activities by city staff that end up bringing sand up on Balboa Peninsula and elevate it as well. But I suspect it's more like previous beach nourishment was placed there at a really high elevation, and the wind has blown the sand to the rear of the beach and just continued to elevate it.
To follow up just once more, and then I'll quit, I promise, guys. If we put sand, a couple of feet of sand on that, since the berm out at the front seems to be the wave run-up predominantly at CDM, that should stay fine, is what you're really saying.
That makes sense, and I would agree to that at this point, yes. Meaning it would remain stable and it wouldn't go away. Is that...
Boy, I wish I could get your name and sign to that.
Chris.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Right in front of the Newport Pier, is that the canyon right there? Is that the profile of the canyon?
Yes. That is the profile of the canyon.
How deep is that?
Wow. Several thousand feet. I don't, I'd have to look at what the depth is in the center. I'm guessing 3,000 feet. It may be even a little deeper. But it's real interesting, if you go around here in a boat with a phasometer in it, you can see suddenly, as you hit here, the phasometer just shows, goes to 100 feet like right away and then comes up again as you go by it. It comes right up to the end of the pier. It's very close to it. It's not a significant sink for sand. A little bit of sand goes in that canyon, but not a lot. So it's not your big, it's not a big problem for you, which is good, because it could be.
That's what allowed large shipping boats to come in to deliver cargo as your centennial moment.
Hey, you probably know more than I do. The other type of measurement the city could do and has done in the past is measurements of the current along the shoreline, the wave-driven current which carries sand. There were measurements made in the 90s called LEO measurements. All that means is literal environmental observations. The coastal zone is called the littoral zone, sand transport. And at the locations shown on the figure, regular measurements by lifeguards of the current and the wave conditions and the tides made systematically over time would help the city understand why is there sand going where it is, and at what time of year does it move in a particular direction. So if a source of sand becomes available, you'd know where should you put it? Or should we wait to put it somewhere until the currents go in the other direction more favorable to you? So it's a good predictor and helps us better understand your city. And finally, a couple of project ideas, just for your edification, are, an example of managing sand is to do something called back-passing, which is taking it from a wide section of beach and putting it back to the narrow section of the beach where we think it came from. And this could be done by taking sand from the beach near the Santa Ana River to reduce the trek across the desert by beachgoers and put the sand down here in the erosion hotspots so if the cluster of storms happen to occur one wild summer, that this beach will be wide enough to sustain itself and still protect homes. Another idea is if sand is brought from outside of the city in as nourishment, it probably should be placed down in the center section of West Newport, somewhere between 44th Street and maybe 24th Street, with the idea being to widen out the erosion hotspot and also allow for a little bit of sand to start going into Balboa Peninsula. The closer this nourishment is placed to the pier, the better the chances are it will get to the peninsula as well and do some benefit there. And then finally, any sand that might be available to be placed on Corona del Mar Beach should definitely be placed at the east end first, and it'll probably work its way toward the west end naturally. Another thing that could happen here, and it's not shown, is sand could mechanically be removed or mined like I just showed you at West Newport and taken from this section of the beach and put over there. And it could be done periodically for a relatively low cost. That's all the information that I brought, at least in presentation form.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Rosansky?
Just another follow-up. You talked about where the shoreline was, but did, in your report here, and we just received it today, so I really haven't had a chance to look at it, but did you indicate at all, and you touched on it a little bit, about the relative heights of the beach?
Yes.
Is the beach in certain areas getting, actually getting higher or not?
It appears to be. We did look at that throughout the whole city, and it appears that West Newport has elevated itself by about a foot and a half over what naturally might be the case. So there is probably a little more sand toward the back of the beach than might be needed. We're loathe to suggest that it be lowered much because you don't, if the lower you get it, the greater the invitation is for water to come over it during a combined high-tide, high-wave event. They do occur. You haven't seen one in a while, but you don't want to create a pathway for it to come across the beach. But it could be managed toward the elevation of the street ends. Getting it below that, we understand, would be detrimental for emergency vehicles driving onto the beach from the street end. But there are existing practices of lowering that section of the beach, and we suggest that continuing to be optimized as appropriate. Balboa Peninsula has a higher beach than anywhere else. We're not advocating that that be lower because there's sand dunes at the back of the beach that are relatively sensitive. So we suggest leave Balboa Peninsula alone and maybe concentrate those efforts on West Newport.
And in order to get the type of information we're going to need in the future to know where to deposit the sand, and you touched on it a little bit, but you did basically say in answer to my question that you weren't exactly sure why West Newport was growing, you know, where all that sand was coming from, whether it was coming from the north, or is it being pushed up from, you know, 24th to 43rd Street up to, excuse me, the 60s and 70s? Or is it coming out of the river, which we're going to get less sand out of the river as they've cemented it in and projects have gone in all the way up? So, I mean, I think it's important for us because opportunities do arise for sand. And depending on the type of sand, like, you know, a couple of years ago, I argued against depositing sand on the beach because it was coming out of the river. And, you know, I was concerned about the type and quality of the material. And so we came up with an alternative plan to deposit it in the offshore zone, littoral zone that you were talking about, with the hopes that it would self-filter and push it up onto the beach. But obviously, it's important where we deposit that sand in order to get the maximum benefit out of it.
That's correct. And sand taken from the rear of the beach could be placed down by the water line to widen the beach. It could be placed anywhere on the berm where there's depressions to bring those back up.
I'm more concerned about opportunistic sand, where we're going to get it out of the river or dredging projects that may present an opportunity. But certainly, we don't want to pass on them, but we want to make sure it goes in the right place at the right time.
Okay, I'd like to see if we can, if there are any public comments. Anybody wish to, from the public, wish to make a comment at this time?
I had one question, too. I wanted to get in there sometime.
We'll still have an opportunity after public comments.
Hi, I'm Jim Brooks. I live on Seashore Drive. The project that we talked about for 2005 of putting the sand on the West Newport Beach, I was one of the leaders of the public that felt as though that wasn't the thing to do. We did agree with putting it offshore because it had a chance to clean and get itself ready to come on naturally. I've briefly ran through the report as well, reading it as the presentation was going on. My impressions are that it appears as it's done a pretty good job of bringing together a lot of data that wasn't available before. But it does show that all of our beaches are artificially made. And there's a point at which, when we make artificial beaches, we have to say enough is enough, and we've got them wide enough, and we've got them tall enough. And I think the second part of the report that I thought was very interesting was that there are areas of excess and there are areas of deficit. The 56th Street all the way up to Santa Ana River, definitely excess. That south of there, the 30s and the 40s, probably a deficit. And so I think the direction of that report is going well in that respect. I think we would support, at least my impressions of what I've talked with other neighbors about, if we would target about the replenishment need in the areas of need and try to take into account not only width but depth. For example, at my residence, I look out over a crown of sand that probably is plus 17 feet. And if you were to go from the end of the street, that's probably a plus 13 feet. So we have a crown of sand that's four-plus feet. And that accentuates the escarpments that occurred during the time of heavy wave action because the sand is being pushed back constantly toward the water. Because we call the city and say, I've got sand a foot deep on my porch. Can you pull your sand off of my porch? And they come out with a big bulldozer's push-it-out, and they form this crown, which then accentuates the escarpment. So one, I have grandchildren, I worry about them going near the escarpment. Two, it is an impediment to enjoying a beautiful view of the beach because anyone walking on the beach can't see the beach until you get almost to the top of the crown. And so the consideration of depth must go along with width. The report, if I picked up correctly, was using a plus 14.5. It seems right. I'd like to be able to give that some further thought. That would take another two and a half, three feet off of what we're experiencing right now in our area where we have an excess. I think the width needs to have a determination as well. I think a plus 250 from the measurements that were used within the report is a good target area. I think we have to agree at some point, having a beach as wide as it is at the Santa Ana River mouth is not desirable. That's like crossing the Sahara Desert, and I think few people enjoy that beach when they have to walk it. We would not want to enjoy that kind of a beach either. I think the idea of using back-pass sand from the excess to the deficits has a lot of merit, and this working to reduce the escarpments or the escarpments is very important. One last item. A lot of basis is given to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' sand budget that they completed during the year 2002. I have a real problem with it. Having a little bit of background in engineering, there's two errors, I think, is made in the report. Number one, I don't find anywhere where they considered the depth of sand being put onto the beach. Now, I'm not talking about the depth of sand right at where the waves break. I'm talking about the backflow of sand that occurs because of the wind action that blows that sand, and it covers our porch on a regular basis. I have yet to decipher whether or not that budget took that into account. And that's significant because if you think about two or three extra feet on top of sand that's pushed back over 250 feet, and you take that along the 20-mile distance that we have between here and Sunset, you get a significant number of cubic yards of sand. So I would be a little bit suspect on the first count. The second count is, is that we speak of losing 15,000 cubic yards a year, and that total budget number is in the mid-hundreds of thousands. We're talking about small percentages, 3%, 4%, 5% max. And the engineering accuracy of that budget is not there. I'm surprised engineers are allowed to go and make statements that this is that significant because in comparison to the big numbers, it's a very small percentage. So generally, good direction, good suggestions. I'd like to see more support in the directions that we indicated. If we could have a public input on a regular basis as to those standards and those directions, we would like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to comment on these?
Mr. Nichols, you had one more question, right?
A short one. I believe it's short. At the mouth of the river, there are under, there seems to be a cleavage in the rock down there. And my question is, did you get any depth findings out there that seem to indicate that there, that there is a cleavage roughly at the mouth of the Santa Ana River as well? Or do you think that the earthquake falls is roughly coming up that gorge at McFadden Pier?
I honestly do have no idea. I have never heard a reference to that, so I'm not familiar with the phenomenon. But I'd be, I'd love to know more about it. So maybe I can get some information if you can guide me toward where you heard about that or where you've read about that.
It's in our oil fields data, and I'd be happy to correspond with you a little bit on it because I think it has merit.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else seeing? No other comments? Thank you very much, Chris.
You're welcome.
The next item is our traffic signal coordination report. We got, sorry that we kind of ran out of time on this one, but 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In the interest of time, my staff report is very brief, and I'll just move directly to introducing Mark Miller. He's vice president with the firm of Albert Grover and Associates, a well-known, well-respected traffic consulting firm who does an awful lot of signal timing work. We thought it might be helpful to the council to hear a presentation from somebody that hasn't been directly involved with the city in generalities to better understand what's the... directly involved with the city in generalities, to better understand what signal timing can and can't do. And following Mark's presentation, I have just a couple PowerPoint slides talking about current and upcoming signal projects. So with that, I'll introduce Mark.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Mayor, council members, again, Mark Miller, Vice President, Albert Grover and Associates. Come to Newport Beach, enjoy the ambiance. And my parents used to live here many years ago after the war. Unfortunately, they didn't keep their house. They decided to move to Oregon because they had traffic problems here. So, figure that one out. Just want to, I'm going to go through these slides briefly. I can talk for hours on traffic signal coordination. You have a very unique city here. It's Newport Beach. Done signal timings throughout Orange County, LA County, San Bernardino, Riverside County. Every city's different. Every city has their particular ways. But why signal coordination? I use an old adage that engineers have used for years, and that is, everybody would love to live on a cul-de-sac and have a freeway on and off ramp into their garage. Unfortunately, we can't do that. So we have to go from point A to B, A to B. And the area that we have the most problems in is traffic signals, because that's where we stop and go. Orange County has put in a lot of traffic signals over the years, and they usually build them to the largest size because the money was available. And because of that, when traffic increased, and it has increased over the years, at least when I was in high school, I really had to work hard to get a car. Today, everybody seems to be driving a car. So signal coordination is very beneficial to move traffic. Some of the benefits, we have increased capacity at intersections and on roadways. You're not going to be building wider streets because of limited rideaway. So we can increase capacity of the roadway by increasing and working with signal timing. Generally, with coordination, we can get a 10 to 15% increase in capacity on a roadway. Reducing overall delay at an intersection, when we speak of reducing delay, we speak of not only the main street, but also the side street, the amount of time that drivers have to wait. The way we do that is by platooning vehicles. And I'm going to show you a simple graph here in just a moment of how vehicles can be platooned in groups together to go through traffic signals at the same rate. And one of the benefits is reducing rear-end accidents. Basically, anytime you put a traffic signal in, you end up with more rear-end accidents. The severity of the accident is decreased with a, within a signalized intersection. But with coordinating traffic, you basically allow the traffic to move at the same speed. And so you don't have the differential of speeds where we have rear-end accidents. This is a simple, what we call a time-space diagram. Signal coordination is based on time, which is the vertical axis, and distance, which is the horizontal. If you can picture the horizontal distance as your intersections, if you're in a helicopter looking down. And basically, it is miles per hour, or, you know, feet per second as traffic travels. Let me see if we got this pointer here, if I can use this correctly. And if the cars leave in a platoon at this intersection, and we're traveling a long distance at a certain rate, we can platoon them through these intersections on what we call a green band, or the green interval. So in other words, if it's 35 miles an hour, and we set the signals to that speed, the vehicle should be able to travel in groups of platoons through the band. And so this would be one direction of an arterial, and this would be the other direction. You notice at some point, they do cross. The dark is the red interval, so this is basically the side street where a car is sitting on a red light while the main street is traveling green. And that's what I'm going to be talking off of this time-space, what we call a time-space diagram. And we create these on, for various arterials, based on various speeds. And I'll just walk you through that.
Just a quick question, or maybe a comment.
Yes, sir.
Platoons seem to be solid. I mean, you know, some, some of our streets, and certainly in Newport Beach at Pacific Coast Highway, it's not platooned. It's just a...
Random arrivals.
Yeah, it's just a chain of cars.
Chain of cars.
How do you deal with that?
Well, there's, there's ways to do that.
Okay.
And we're going to talk about that. One of the things that's basically needed is you need to have the right kind of equipment on the roadway. You need to have compatible equipment, equipment that can basically speak the same language to each other, like your computers, you know? Years ago, we had computers, and they had different languages. Microsoft came in, Apple came in. Everything started to become uniform. Same thing in the traffic signal world. The traffic signals are basically computers. And if we can get computers to speak the same language and talk to each other, we can have them coordinated. That's one of the problems. Linking the intersections together, you either use a wire in the roadway, you can use microwave, or different types of wireless, or fiber optic. A number of cities have been doing this. So we want to link these intersections together, be able to have them talk to each other through what's called a master. Your city does that. It has what's called a VMS system. It's been in place for many, many years, decades. I'm sure Rich can tell you exactly when it took place. It was the best thing when it first came in. It's antiquated now. That system is antiquated. It still runs your system, but there are more and better uses of equipment.
Will you talk about the compatibility problem? In our community, we have the Caltrans, we have the city system. What insights can you share with us in terms of the options that we might have when you have those two different systems?
As far as compatibility, because signals are basically computers, and they run on a language, different types of computer languages. They're manufactured by independent firms, and they're proprietary. So you have a firm like Econolite, or you have a firm like Synchronex, or you have a firm, you know, there's, there's all types. Eagle, they manufacture their equipment, they sell it to a city, you buy their software. That's for City of Newport Beach. But the City of Huntington Beach, or Caltrans, decided to go with a different set of equipment. Those two pieces of equipment don't speak to each other. One speaks English, one speaks Chinese. They don't talk. There are ways to make these systems work together. And that was going to be my next, my next step here. And Caltrans has produced documents and specifications whereby, it's not proprietary, and they can design a type of controller that uses a language that others can write, and so they can speak to each other. I might, might be getting a little...
Can I suggest that we let him get through his presentation and then keep track of your questions? Because otherwise, we're going to run out of time before the presentation is finished.
The, the way we can speak to other controllers, or at least run different controllers in different agencies, is what's called time-based coordination. We basically, each controller has a clock. The clocks need to be synchronized. The way we synchronize the clocks is we use the same time base, the bases. It's called WWV. It's out of Boulder, Colorado, or out of Hawaii. There's a synchronized signal that goes out. All your time clocks are synchronized to that signal. And because it's time-distance, we can coordinate the traffic signals through multi-jurisdictions. That's basically the simple way to do it. It's all based on a clock. My wristwatch, your watches, we can sync together today, in a month. We look at them, and they're all off by a few seconds or maybe minutes. When you have that in a system, and you're off by 10 or 15 seconds, you've lost your coordination. So those clocks have to be synchronized every day, every month, every year. That's the basic way. One way to do that is to install a central coordination system. They can be run on PCs nowadays. The capacity is, is great with the PCs. You can run a central system for a city your size on a desktop computer. I do that for many cities. And that, by that way, that computer is actually the master. The intersections in the street are called the slaves. The master talks to the slaves every day and says, okay, fellows, line up. We're going to be in this type of a coordination plan, and we want all you guys lined up at the same time. That's how it works. Pretty simplistic. Quickly, one of the ways we develop signal timing plans is you actually have to take counts in the field. For your city, you have a very unique situations on the weekends. You have a lot of weekend traffic that differs. So there should be weekend counts, mid-week counts, field observations of what we call flow rates. In other words, how are drivers actually driving in the city of Newport Beach? And we consider flow rates, 1,700 vehicles an hour per lane. Some cities, drivers are a little more aggressive, and they can be to 2,000 vehicles per hour. We use a computer simulation called Syncro, or Simtraffic, you might have heard of that, where we can put this data into a simulation, and then run programs and do various scenarios on, on synchronizing signals. But getting down to it, this does, you just can't take this information and put it in the field. You need engineering fine-tuning. It needs to be implemented in the field by qualified people, and then it needs to be fine-tuned in the field. So there are several steps of fine-tuning. You can come up with the best plan on a Monday, but it may not work that well on a Wednesday. And the computers today can alter the different plans for the time of day, day of week, weekends. It's a lot of things you can do. Some of the drawbacks on signal coordination that we hear all the time as traffic engineers, if you, if you're at an intersection that has never been coordinated, and the driver can come up on a side street, and as soon as he hits the side street, the signal turns green, and they're, they're off. They get on the main street, and they're stopping. When you implement timing, there's going to be give and take. If you're going to coordinate an arterial, the side street is going to have to wait while the arterial is progressing through. The platoons are progressing through. You get a lot of citizen complaints that they now are sitting on the side street waiting, and you hear five, 10 minutes, when actually, that is not true, because your signal timing plans are maybe 90 seconds or 120 seconds. So they'll never wait five or 10, but it feels like it. The other complaint is, well, my, the green arrow is too short. I used to be able, I was the fifth car back, and I used to be able to get through on the left turn. Now I can't, cannot get through. Well, this is especially true if your mainline volumes continue to fluctuate during the day, and your timing plans are changing based upon the way the traffic patterns are working during the day. Your green time could be longer in the morning for one movement, and in the afternoon be shorter for that same movement, because there's more opposing through traffic. And you're trying to serve the highest volume of traffic. So we end up getting these kinds of complaints. Unfortunately, some cities run out, and they, they just throw away their timing plans to serve the one or two individuals that are complaining. Where if you are willing to go for it for about a month or two, people start to change their habits, and they learn that they're actually saving time if they will get into the coordinated band of traffic. But changing people's habits are very difficult. Why does it appear not to work, appear not to work? Signal phasing type. There's, when we talk about phasing of a signal, we talk about a left turn arrow that may come up as a, what we call a leading left turn. We call a left turn arrow that may come up later, we call it a lagging left turn. Different intersections are designed at a point in time for the needs at that point in time. Phasing needs to be changed as growth occurs and different needs take place on an arterial. So because a signal was designed in 1980 a certain way, doesn't mean it should remain that way in 2006. So a signal needs to be looked at, and maybe different types of phasing. Traffic, travel speed changes, coordination not updated. For instance, your speed limits are changed, possibly changed every five years. You're required to do speed surveys. Your speed limit can go up and down five miles an hour. That will change the timing plan. So the timing plans need to be updated according to the speed changes on a road, a roadway. Maintenance limitations, this seems to be one of the big issues in many cities today, is paying attention to their system and making sure that the maintenance company, if you use a maintenance company, or you use your own forces, are aware of the coordination plans that are taking place. And if a signal controller breaks down for some reason, they replace it with the same type of signal controller and implement the timing plans. This is one of the benefits of having a, a traffic operations center in-house, where you can actually view on the computer that the system is working properly, and the engineer can look and see, perhaps there's something wrong, and a controller was replaced in the evening. There could have been an accident, there could have been a voltage spike, there could have been lightning that, that hit. There's all kinds of issues. Interconnect, that's what IC stands for. Interconnect that runs in the roadway, sometimes contractors are out there, they hit the interconnect, and then the system goes down. You can tell very quickly if a system's working with your, your clock, your in-house computer. Then your time clocks, as I also mentioned, they will drift over time if they're not connected together. Again, why does it appear? Side street access. You have a lot of side streets in Newport that are not signalized. People come out, they make a right turn onto an arterial, and they immediately think that the traffic is not flowing very well. If we go back to the slide where you, you saw the progression on the street where you had the green band, if a driver comes in too early, he's going to hit a red light. And it may take one or two or three signals to get back into the platoon. But if their, if their destination isn't that far, they're going to say, well, of course, the signal's not working in coordination, because I hit every red light for the last three signals. Generally, your coordination is going to be over a distance of much greater than two or three signals. So if you came in early on the green band, you'll hit a red light. Random pedestrian activity, that happens a lot in your community. Pedestrians just step out in front of cars, the cars have to stop, or they yield to pedestrians, bicyclists, dogs running through the street. It takes a while, once those cars stop and the queue begins to take place, it takes a while for that queue to then level out. And by that time, you could be running a different timing plan. So that's a reason why it appears it's not working. Accidents on the roadway. Of course, if you have an accident, the signal coordination system will not appear to work. Speeding vehicles. People in a hurry and driving over the speed limit are going to hit the red lights. They're going to hit every red light. And they should hit the red light. And they're going to call and complain, I never got a green light. The question is, well, how fast were you driving? Well, I was driving 50 into 35. Well, you're not going to get the green, the green lights. You're not in the band. On-street parking, people backing in the spaces, slow down the queuing of vehicles. Early start of green. If you're on a side street that is a signalized intersection, excuse me, if, if you're on the main street and the, the side street doesn't have enough cars on it to hold the red light, you can actually, the signal can actually turn green too early to where the progression is lost in the next signal. In other words, you will get a green light early, and you'll hit the next signal, and it'll be red. You're basically out of the green band. And that happens on side streets that have signals where there's not a lot of traffic or a lot of pedestrian use. Increase, what can help? Budgeting for increased and routine maintenance of your hardware system. You have a very corrosive environment here, and the wiring and computers need to be checked periodically. Updating your timing plans every two to three years. The whole county is changing as far as the population, the growth, people driving through your city as well as living here. We recommend every two to three years to review your timing plans and to update them because of the changes. A central computer system that's easily monitored, that is user-friendly. Basically, you're not looking for a lot of bells and whistles. You need somebody that's going to go red, yellow, green, can be monitored by your engineers, and can be easily replaced over time. Strategically placed CCTV cameras, closed-circuit TV cameras can be very useful for a city such as yours if they're put in the right position, that can be monitored by your engineers. When they get complaints about congestion, they can actually, unfortunately for engineers, we spend a lot of time in the field looking at situations. If we can look through a, a camera that is reliable and get the feel for what's taking place on the street, we can adjust the signal timing plans as needed. Signal priority rather than preemption. In your city, your fire department, or whoever you're using, has a preemption system. When they flash and are on a call, a priority call, they actually control the traffic signals. It's taken out of coordination. And once they do that, and it depends how many times they're running arterial, the signal coordination may never come into play during the morning time if there's been a lot of calls. We are looking at more and more what's called a priority system rather than a preemption. And that is, we allow the signals to work together, two, three, four, five signals together for the emergency vehicles. And now with the use of GPS systems, we can actually do that rather than using the light system. Public information, dynamic message signs. I think the more the public knows, the better they can drive. If they know what's... If they know what speed the signals are set at, they can drive it at that speed. Years ago, I can remember some signs, signal set for 35 miles an hour. But you need to have dynamic message because it may be 35 in the morning, it may be 25 in the afternoon because of the volume of traffic. The more cars, the less the speed. So, the signal timing has to be adjusted for that volume and speed of traffic. But if you inform the driver of what the signals are set at, they can make some intelligent decisions on how to drive. I really appreciate on the freeways, now that Caltrans is initiated, how much time it takes to get to the airport. Number one, it removes a lot of frustration for me. Number two, I don't have the speed if I'm on the 105 saying, "In 20 minutes, I will be at LAX." Today, when I drove down here from Fullerton, the signs are actually, an Amber Alert is out there today regarding a child abduction. So, to use these dynamic message signs, inform the public would be very helpful and we're looking in that at some other cities. Special event, there's cases where your signal timing is going to fail because the volume of traffics for the event is just overwhelming the system. More often than not, good-trained police officers, or we call PCOs, go into the field and they can actually manually adjust the traffic signals according to the needs on walkie-talkies or communicating with each other. I've done this around shopping malls, fairgrounds, in many places. Cal State Fullerton opened up, 30,000 students came into Fullerton on one day. We had all 10 of our signals around the college manned by the police department. If we didn't do that, the best timing plans wouldn't have worked. And that's just the way it is. Signal timing has its limitations. It only can do so much for you. And if you can't build the streets wider and secure right of way, then people are going to seek alternate ways. If gasoline becomes $10 a gallon, we'll probably see less people driving or maybe they're going to use compressed natural gas, I'm not sure, or bicycles or other means. Simple signing and striping changes on your roadway can go a long way to increasing your capacity. Removing unnecessary crosswalks and changing signal phases can help out a lot. Relocation of crosswalks at intersections, it's frustrating when you want to make a left turn and people are just sort of sondering across the crosswalk and you're waiting to go and cars are waiting and you're saying, "Why is that crosswalk there?" Those are some things. Protected permissive signals, I'm assuming you understand, you have a couple right out front of City Hall where you will give a left turn arrow when there's cars queued in the left turn pocket, but when there's no cars there, you can turn on the green ball. That's a very efficient way to run a signal system. And then, simple local widening at some locations which you may not be able to do here. The other thing, condition developers to make signal improvements in your cities if you're in certain locations. In conclusion, I call it the three O's, operational bottlenecks, optimizing traffic signal coordination systems and ongoing monitoring and updating. If you can do that, your system will work, your citizens will notice it. I do get compliments on a number of systems that I've worked on, but more often than not, people are not going to compliment you, they're going to complain when there's issues. And I'll let Rich.
I've got one question, one comment. Your signal timing diagram showed evenly spaced intersections.
Yes.
Can you please comment in your discussion what irregularly spaced intersections does to your timing programs?
Well...
And your ability to do two-way.
Two-way. Well, in the best laid plans of mice and men, if we had 30 quarter-mile spacing and 35 miles an hour, we wouldn't have any congestion. We don't have that. It's very important where you put the signals and allow them to go in, number one. But there are ways and the way you do signal phasing with lead lags or using a protected permissive, removing what we call split phases where one side of the street goes and then the other side of the street goes. The basic rule is you have to serve the pedestrian. The pedestrian time cannot be violated. And if you have crosswalks on both sides of a side street coming across an arterial and your phases are split, then you've basically doubled your time in that intersection. You want to reduce the overall time of signal timing based on what your conditions are. And, you know, there's a lot of signals that are creatively designed if you think in terms of signal coordination. That's one of the things we do. We look at that type of stuff.
Okay, one question.
Councilor Diggle.
On the centralized computer system, we visited Corona, they have a big room.
Yes.
And then, we also visited Anaheim. They have a big, they told us, we didn't see it, they have a big room.
They have a bigger room.
It's bigger, okay. And one of the things they said to us is that if they had to do it today, and that's where we are, you know, we're kind of trying to move forward with some plans, that they wouldn't have the bricks and mortar, that they'd use just a web-based system. What are your thoughts in terms of a room or just using a web-based system?
My thoughts are keep it simple. Again, you can spend a lot of money on bells and whistles and not really get any more or better signal coordination. One of the problems with an elaborate system with a lot of cameras all over the city, you got to have people to watch them. And unless you have somebody there, you're going to pay it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's really not going to help you. To keep it simple, to look at the overall plan of the city, what is the main plan and desire of the city, what you want to see happen and to design your system on that. It doesn't have to be a huge room that takes up a lot of space. I don't think you have a lot of space here, quite frankly.
That's one of our constraints. So, you find web-based systems reliable?
Absolutely. We're doing more and more of those. IP addresses, using the Internet to communicate to the signals. The technology is increasing exponentially. In fact, if I go back to my office, I may learn something new. I don't know. Hey, Natalie?
Hey, Rich, did you have something else you wanted to bring up?
Just real quickly, I've had some questions I thought I'd just touch. We have two projects underway right now. The Coast Highway Orchid, the lighted crosswalk, that'll be activated in early October. The main delay has been getting the signal poles. The Edison work has been done. That's, I know, something that Corona Mars waited for and it's probably about a month away at this point. The second project is an example, I think, of one of the things that Mark related to is we do budget every year to upgrade existing equipment and the aggressive corrosive environment we have is behind that. This year, we have three rehabs, we're doing, we replaced the cabinet, the controller, and in two of the three locations, signal heads and even poles. Opticom, that's the brand name of the signal priority system or preemption system that the fire department has. We work with them and typically budget to add two locations, equip two locations a year with them. And then finally, the last part of that is a BBS battery backup system. We're adding it to 17 more locations as part of a program the council endorsed a number of years ago to provide signal operation during a power failure. And finally, in this year's budget, the three ones I wanted to highlight is, the first one is a system improvement. This will be an Internet, IP-based Ethernet of consistent system. It's a new master PC in the office with the software. Two CCTVs are programmed for the project on MacArthur Boulevard. And 21 signals will be upgraded to the new compatible equipment in the field and brought online. And we expect that'll be, you know, go out to bid sometime later this fiscal year. In addition, there's money budgeted for coordination improvements. Again, some of the areas we have in the ground, copper wire, other areas, none's been put in in the past. And we're also looking at both wireless and in some cases, fiber optics. Part of, the first part of the top project, the system improvement, actually requires the consultant to develop a master plan for communication so that we have a good, solid plan to work towards now that we know the technology we want to use in terms of cameras and computers and we know what their needs are bandwidth-wise and so forth. We'll design that system and then they will design the system, then we'll actually implement the first part of it. And finally, the third project, again, there's money budgeted up, rehabilitate two to three older locations and again, add a couple more locations into Opticom for the fire department.
Can you remind us again what streets you currently, what streets and the limits on those streets you currently have coordinated or synchronized?
Our number one street really, City Street, is Jamboree and it's coordinated all the way from Coast Highway up to, well, I'm starting actually, we've got a couple of different types of coordination there, but from Coast Highway up to and including Bayview by Fletcher Jones. We have Irvine Avenue and that Jamboree is pretty much, I think it's from 6:30 in the morning to about 7:00 at night, Monday through Friday, that we coordinate those signals. Irvine Avenue is coordinated during the AM and PM peak hour periods and that's from 17th West Cliff on up to San Diego. And we have Superior is coordinated those signals. Irvine Avenue is coordinated during the AM and PM peak hour periods and that's from 17th West Cliff on up to San Diego. And we have Superior is coordinated during similar morning and afternoon peak periods. Again, there's just a few signals that are part of that. We do some priority treatment for the signals along San Joaquin Hills Road in the PM peak hour because that's, again, one of the things we look at is when is there enough traffic to offset some of the negatives that Mark described of increased complaints and so forth. And that's really something we've tried to walk that fine line of writing as much, you know, coordination as we can. And again, there's, at some point, we've backed off in the past anyway in terms of the number of complaints we've received on that. The, all of Coast Highway is coordinated. Twelve of those intersections are under the city's jurisdiction, the remaining are under Caltrans. And the two Bristol Streets on either side of 73, those are coordinated. We took that over from Caltrans. It's a Caltrans system, it's one of the ones that speaks Chinese from our perspective, but we've maintained a working relationship with Caltrans and it continues to work. And that one is coordinated 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Because of the very close spacing over the freeway, if it's not, the danger is traffic will back up from one intersection over the freeway and block the next intersection. So, it's 24 hours a day.
What about MacArthur Boulevard?
MacArthur Boulevard currently does not have coordination and part of that is there's a couple of intersections are Caltrans-type controllers that again, don't speak to the city type. That is why it is one of those, the 21 intersections that are shown there to be upgraded, that's the first phase includes all of MacArthur as well as the intersections around San Miguel, MacArthur and San Joaquin will be tied into that system because that's, at this point, our greatest need of where we need to expand the system.
Okay, we are running out of time. Is anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, are there any questions that you can quickly ask?
Just one, the Orchid press-button light, that will not be coordinated with the system, right? Or will it?
At the present time, no, it is not set up to be...
Now, won't that really wreck the thing pretty good?
I mean, it would be better if it were, but again, when that was, intersection was analyzed, I mean, that would be an advantage if you put in a full signal of these, the lighted crosswalks. To get it to be coordinated, you would have to spend considerable additional money and basically put in the same computer that you would for the signal. Then that could be done at a later date if that's...
I think what you're saying is that there isn't enough people walking across there that you think it's worthwhile right now, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not dying.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edmiston and Mr. Miller. That concludes our study session. Any general public comments on items on the agenda? Seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session. Council, please get in there fast because we've shaved 15 minutes off the session.